Good evening. I'd like to call the White Marsh Board of Supervisors meeting to order for May 11th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Olivia tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. J.C., do you have any announcements for us?
I do, Fran. Thank you. Saturday, April 22nd, was another successful White Marsh Township Day. Thanks goes out to Tom Blumstrom and his team in the Parks and Recreation Department, along with all the volunteers for putting on such a wonderful event. Primary election day is Tuesday, May 16th. You can find your polling location on the White Marsh Township website under Voting Information. Also on Tuesday, May 16th, the Trash Mob will be beautifying the area between the AIM Academy and Hagie's Mill Road along Manor Road from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Volunteers can park in the River Park One lot closest to Manor Road. The first movie in the park for 2023 begins on Friday, May 19th, at Leland Park. The feature is Lightyear, the Disney science fiction action adventure of Buzz Lightyear. Our next tree planting event will be on Saturday, May 20th, from 9:30 to 12:00 noon at Valley Green Park. Volunteers are needed to help that day. The county will host their household hazardous waste collection on Saturday, May 20th, at Temple Ambler Campus from 8:30 to 1:00 p.m. Pre-registration is required with the county. The William Jeans Memorial Library and Nicholas and Athena Carabot Center for Learning will be celebrating their 90th anniversary on Saturday, May 20th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Highlands Mansion and Gardens, 7,000 Chief Lane in Fort Washington. Tickets are on sale at the library and on their website. And just to note, I've got my tickets already, and I know that they are not selling them at the door that day. That's what I've been told. So if you want them, you've got to get them at the library or online. The township offices will be closed on Monday, May 29th, in observance of all the men and women who lost their lives while serving this country. Wishing everyone a happy and safe Mother's Day this Sunday, May 14th.
All right. Thanks, J.C. So we're very honored tonight to have Ms. Olivia Bell with us. So on April 24th of 2023, the township was contacted by Susan Groff of the Girl Experience Specialist of the Girl Scouts of Eastern PA. And she let us know that a member of our community, White Marsh Township, Olivia Bell, would be receiving the Gold Girl Scout Award on May 21st, 2023. So first question I had... I was on a roll. The first question I had was, what is the Gold Award for Girl Scouts? Because I haven't heard about it before. And I got to meet Olivia before the meeting, and her mom and her dad. And they explained that the Gold Award for Girl Scouts is the equivalent to the Eagle Scout for Boy Scouts. And what's so amazing about this is that the estimation is only about 3% of all Girl Scouts will achieve this award. So it's amazing, and the commitment that Olivia put in to get this. And what she did is, she put together a proposal to the White Marsh School District to talk about African history and the impact it could have on society. This was her project. Because what she said is that African history wasn't taught as much as it should be in our school system. Olivia's ultimate goal is to educate society on the impact of African history on Western culture and human history. So earning the Gold Award is kind of a major commemoration of her 12 years of Girl Scouting. But more importantly, it's her project orientation of developing something that could really impact society and her community. So what I learned about Olivia is that she wants to go to law school. And she's already been admitted to Princeton, to start at Princeton in the fall, which is amazing. Olivia, you should be very proud of yourself. We're proud to have you here as a member of our community. And like I said to you before the meeting, we hope that after you're done going to law school, studying patent law, which you will achieve, because this is... What I'm reading about you is amazing. You will achieve this. Come back. We need you. We need you as part of our community to bring solutions to our society. Thank you very much for coming tonight. And if you want to come up and say a few words, please do that.
I mainly just want to thank the White Marsh Board of Supervisors for inviting me tonight and allowing me to be recognized for my Gold Award. And to just thank the community as well for being so open to my project and to learn more overall about African history. So thank you.
Thanks, Olivia. Do we want to take a picture? Congratulations. Congratulations. Parents, would you love to...
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you all very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much. It's awesome.
All right. Have a great night. Thank you. All right. Now, we're going to celebrate our police department. So I'd like to welcome retired chief James Adams of Upper Allen Township PCPA Accreditation Program Coordinator to come up and talk about what our police department is receiving this evening. Thanks for coming out.
You're quite welcome. It's actually my pleasure. This is the fun part of my job at PA Chiefs, managing the accreditation program and traveling around the state, especially when there's milestones that a police department makes. I'm actually here to present two certificates and recognize two accomplishments. And I was told that there's some very strict timekeeping here as far as how long I'm allowed to talk, and it's five minutes per. So I figure since I have two awards, maybe I can get 10 minutes today. But seriously, I would like to go back in time to what started this whole process. In 2001, the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association rolled out a law enforcement accreditation program. And I went back through the archives at work today before I left and found the original enrollment letter for the White Marsh Township Police Department dated September 18th, 2001. The program rolled out in July of 2001, and your police department was one of the first agencies to enroll. This was back before accreditation was popular, before it was the in thing to do, and it was being done for the right reason, because obviously, you were police chief and the elected officials at that time were visionaries and recognized the significance of having an accredited department. It took about seven years to become accredited, which is very, very typical back then, because there were not any other accredited agencies to turn to to help. We didn't have... We now are in our 19th annual training conference for new accreditation managers we hold every year. Didn't have that back in the early stages. We also didn't have what is called the Pennsylvania Police Accreditation Coalition, which is a different organization, which brings all the accreditation managers together to help other agencies become accredited. So your police department worked very hard to become accredited back in 2008. I'm here for two reasons. One, to present their re-accreditation, because what happens when you get accredited, then every three years, we send in a new team of assessors and put you through the process again. And so I'm here tonight to present the latest certificate, which they just earned. And what does that certificate represent? It's more than just a certificate. It's more than just having a seal on your police cars and on your building. It represents that your police department is held to 125 best practices in law enforcement. Really doesn't stop there. Within those 125 best practices, there's another 235, what we call bullets or sub-practices in there. So really, your police department is complying with about 370 best practices. So they have policies, procedures, things in place to show that they're complying with best practices. Then our assessment team, not only do they review your policies and practices and procedures, but your department has to produce a minimum of two proofs of compliance for every one of those 370 standards. They have to show, present proof to the assessors, that not only do they have the appropriate policy in place, but staff is actually complying with those policies. So it's quite an extensive process. And so I'm here... Your department had their fifth clean reassessment. That means over 15 years, every three years, they've had a new assessment, fresh team of assessors come in. And after five clean reacreds, we grant them what is called premier status. So I'm here also to present premier status. We have, depending on what day you count them, about 1,100 municipal police departments in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We currently have accredited about 165 of those, but we currently only have about 150 accredited. It is not a rubber stamp. It is not an award for life, because some departments haven't been able to maintain their accreditation, because it does take work. It does take a commitment. So right now, we're at 150 accredited agencies. That's about 13% of all the municipal police departments in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania are currently accredited. Then as far as premier status, we have 26. White Marsh Police Department makes the 26th premier agency, which means they're in the top 2% of all the municipal police departments in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It's, I think, quite an honor to be in that elite group. But then some people ask, so what's it mean to be accredited? I'll give you two examples real quickly. One, insurance companies are starting to recognize it. Some insurance companies are actually reducing liability premiums to agencies that are accredited, because what's the research and the statistics are showing? When you have two police departments of similar size, similar jurisdiction, accredited agencies are getting sued less often than non-accredited agencies. Also, when an accredited agency gets sued, the payouts are significantly less, thus saving your insurance company money. So I don't know if you... It's not my business of who your insurance carrier is, but I hope that they're giving you a reduction. Your police department has been accredited now since 2008. The other example I use, going a little bit back in time, after the unfortunate situation with George Floyd, a lot of our state elected officials were pushing the eight can't wait initiatives they came out with and said, we want all police departments to immediately adopt these eight initiatives that we feel all police departments need to comply with. Well, guess what? Your police department and all the other police departments who are accredited already had policy addressing every one of their eight can't wait initiatives, and also they could prove that they were complying with those through accreditation. So we try to stay ahead. Much of the chagrin of your accreditation manager, who's managing all this for you, our standards are constantly changing, because policing is constantly changing too. But not only do you have the seal that shows it, but you can attest that you've had outsiders come in and go through your policy. I'd love to stand up here and talk to you all night long about accreditation, but I won't do that. But seriously, if you have an interest, you certainly can talk to your chief, your accreditation manager. You can go on our public-facing webpage, pachiefs.org. There's an accreditation tab there. Click on that. There's a ton of information. And also, those 125 standards that your police department are complying with are posted publicly on our webpage. So they're available if you want some reading tonight. So without any further ado, I would love to call your chief, your accreditation manager up, and along with you, the elected officials, and formally present both your re-accreditation certificate and your premier plaque.
Great. Thank you.
My pleasure. Certainly give the chief the opportunity to talk, too.
That's okay.
And if we could maybe get a picture taken.
I can do this one. I'll say that. I mean, I do. But it was going to say something.
Congratulations, Chief. Congratulations. You're a great officer. My pleasure. That's all right. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. You're a great officer. My pleasure. Yep. Congratulations, accreditation manager.
I didn't even have to. It's good to know.
Yeah. Yeah. We have them up. You're quite welcome. My pleasure. Thank you.
Chief, did you want to say a few words?
The only thing, I wanted to take the time to thank the board for their support and the township manager and all the other staff members. But I want to give special credit to Sergeant Amanda Johnson, who is our accreditation manager and has been for our last two re-accreditations. Not only does Sergeant Johnson cover her duties as a patrol sergeant, she also handles the accreditation duties, which, as you heard Chief Adams explain, they're pretty deep, and it takes a lot of work. And she does a tremendous job, not only for us, but also a lot of our neighboring agencies. Amanda's one of the go-to people in our area for accreditation. And I know our insurance carrier, Divid, does support us in our accreditation. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you all.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sergeant Johnson. Did you want to come up? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Thank you to the board, though. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I didn't even know we had an accreditation manager for the police. It sounds like a tremendous job, like tedious as can be, detail-oriented. I would never want it. And thank you for doing that. It's a big deal. And I'm glad to hear the insurance company is giving us a discount, Mr. Miller. Thank you all very much. Congrats. Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from April 13th, 2023?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We'll have a board discussion item. Let's review SLD number 02-23 Bachman, 6114, and 6202 Sheaf Lane, preliminary final minor subdivision, lot consolidation.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Guttenplan for an introduction, as I share my screen.
Thank you. This is a very simple subdivision, probably the simplest type of subdivision you can This is a consolidation of two lots that are adjacent to each other on Sheaf Lane. The bottom lot with the pond is 6114, and the upper lot that has a home on it is 6202 Sheaf Lane. The entire proposal involves removing the line between those two lots, so that these two lots become one 16.2-acre lot. There's no other proposal. There's no development. And as a result of this consolidation, this 16.2 acres will become one building lot. The existing principal building will be the only principal building allowed on this lot. So the owners will be able to enjoy the entire 16.2 acres with other accessory recreational uses, a pool, what have you, but there'll be no additional homes built in this area. This was reviewed by the planning commissioner in April. They took two actions. One was a recommendation for waivers, and one was a recommendation for approval of preliminary slash final minor subdivision plan. The waivers... The first waiver involves allowance to do both preliminary and final at the same time. All the other waivers are really associated with the fact that there's no development here. So they're not widening the street. They're not putting sidewalks. They're not making improvements, because there is no development. So that was the basis on which the planning commission recommended that the waivers be approved, and hence then that the subdivision be approved. That's really the whole subdivision proposal. John Cobb from Woodrow and Associates is here as their engineer, if you have any questions or if you want any additional information about the plan. But it's basically just a consolidation of two adjacent lots owned by the same individuals.
Makes sense to me. Any board comment?
Just so... Just to confirm, it's the same family that owns both lots? Okay.
There's a couple that has purchased both of the lots. Yes.
And they're doing this... Did they say why? Just that they have it all as one property?
One of the advantages is, I know, and I don't know where this is proposed, but I know one of the things that I've been told that they eventually want to do is put in a pool. Pools have certain setback requirements, as do all accessory uses. Pools are a little more strict. If they left this line in, they'd actually have to respect it as a lot line and have setbacks from that lot line, even though they own both sides. And if they couldn't respect it, they'd have to go to the zoning hearing board. By removing the line, the only lines they have to respect are the outer boundaries of the parcel. So they have a little bit more freedom.
Thanks.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. I guess I'll move down to the resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2023-15, granting conditional preliminary final for minor subdivision approval for SLD number 02-23 Bachman, 6114, and 6202 Sheaf Lane for a lot consolidation?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Nestor?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Chair McCusker?
Yes. Resolution carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Do I have a motion to authorize the PICO Trail license agreement with White Marsh Township for the Miracle Nature Trail project?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair McCusker. This gets us back to the Miracle Nature Trail. We haven't heard anything about this, but there's been some work behind the scenes. And what you'll recall is, the Miracle Nature Trail is a trail, it's a linear trail that would follow the PICO power lines between Butler Pike and Hector Street. It would allow for various amenities, inclusive amenities, natural amenities, different enhancements along that power line. The township had DCNR, DVR, PC grants, in which they worked on a feasibility study. There was a lot of... There was stakeholder steering committee, public comment. Came across the finalized in 2022 by this board that it was feasible to have this type of trail occur. And one of the biggest issues was getting permission from PICO. It's their power lines. It's there right away. And PICO had some various different regulations that just came out recently, I'd say in about the last two years. So we've been working with them, with the solicitor's office, with Dave's help, in going back and forth on trail agreement that would allow us the potential to have this Miracle Nature Trail go along the power lines. So we are very pleased that we're here tonight, where we have an agreement that was reviewed by our solicitor's office, that will allow us the next phase, which would be to apply for grants to go to final design and construction. So this is another milestone moment in this project. I know it's been a little bit of time since we've heard about it, and want to report it's still alive and well. But you do have to... We have to go through certain steps in order to get to that next phase in the project. So this is that next step, which we are recommending that the PICO Trail agreement be approved between the township and PICO.
Awesome. Thanks. Sounds good. Any board comment?
I'm super excited about this. It has been a while, but I know behind the scenes, a lot has been happening. So a lot of appreciation goes out to the township staff, our solicitor's office, and especially Tom Blumstrom.
Absolutely.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the township solicitor to represent the zoning officer in the appeal of zoning case number 2023-10, Super Pups LLC, 723 East Elm Street?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
I'm going to turn this briefly over to Mr. Guttenplan, where he can explain kind of what the appeal is of his zoning violation and the reason for the solicitor's attendance.
There was a case back in 2020 that involved Super Pups LLC at 723 East Elm Street. It was a permitted use. They needed some relief for floodplain and some parking relief, which they received. They then opened... Excuse me, I should go back and say, there were some conditions involved in the case, and one of them was that they not be open on Sunday and have any staff there on Sunday. But they... The board did leave it open, that although it was essentially a dog daycare facility, that they could do boarding later on. And later on was never really defined. So at some point between 2020 and 2022, they started boarding dogs. And they came back to the zoning hearing board to ask for relief from the condition that they not be allowed to have staff or be open at all on Sundays, because they wanted two things. They wanted clients to be able to pick up their dogs on Sunday, and they also needed their staff to be able to take care of the dogs on Sunday. So the board granted the change of the condition, and there were some conditions imposed on that grant. And one of them was because of complaints that we heard at the hearing about too much noise in the neighborhood from the facility, that they do some soundproofing, and that some of it had to be done within 30 days in the portion where they actually do the boarding, and the other had to be done at a later date. And it had to be done to the township's satisfaction. And we started getting complaints a few months later. I went out with Bob Stavinsky, the head of Codes and Building, and their attorney, and we inspected what they had done, which was very insufficient soundproofing. We did not approve it. We told them it was not correct, and that they should bring in an expert to figure out what they had to do. They never did that. We started getting complaints again. And then we issued a violation, saying that they have not met this condition and that they should cease boarding until they had, because the condition, in addition to saying that it be soundproofed, allowed for us to say, you can stop boarding until it is properly soundproofed and the township has approved it. They have appealed that violation, and that appeal is, will you be authorizing the supervisor to represent me at? That hearing is currently scheduled for June 14th.
All right. Thanks, Charlie. Any board comment? Public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number four for River Place, 901 Washington Street, in the amount of $110,701.99?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Heinrich.
Good evening. This is for the townhome development that recently started construction on Washington Street. Our office has inspected the work and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plan, and are recommending a release of $110,701.99. Following this release, there will be remaining escrow of $1,627,803.45.
All right. from the condition that they not be allowed to have staff or be open at all on Sundays because they wanted two things. They wanted clients to be able to pick up their dogs on Sunday, and they also needed their staff to be able to take care of the dogs on Sunday. So the board granted the change of the condition, and there were some conditions imposed on that grant. And one of them was because of complaints that we heard at the hearing about too much noise in the neighborhood from the facility, that they do some soundproofing, and that some of it had to be done within 30 days in the portion where they actually do the boarding, and the other had to be done at a later date. And it had to be done to the township's satisfaction. And we started getting complaints a few months later. I went out with Bob Stabinski, the head of codes and building, and their attorney, and we inspected what they had done, which was very insufficient soundproofing. We did not approve it. We told them it was not correct and that they should bring in an expert to figure out what they had to do. They never did that. We started getting complaints again. And then we issued a violation saying that they have not met this condition and that they should cease boarding until they had because the condition, in addition to saying that it be soundproofed, allowed for us to say you can stop boarding until it is properly soundproofed and the township has approved it. They have appealed that violation, and that appeal is, will you be authorizing the supervisor to represent me at? That hearing is currently scheduled for June 14th.
Thanks, Charlie. Any board comment? Public comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number four for River Place, 901 Washington Street in the amount of $110,701.99?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Heinrich.
Good evening. This is for the townhome development that recently started construction on Washington Street. Our office has inspected the work and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plan and are recommending a release of $110,701.99. Following this release, there will be remaining escrow of $1,627,803.45.
All right. Any board comment?
How's it look back there?
It's still mostly earthwork. No buildings have gone up, just utility and earth moving.
Thanks.
Coming along.
Awesome.
Thank you. Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,066,027.72 and payroll totaling $697,608.52 and pension paid costs totaling $4,341.07 for April 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for renovations and addition at 15 East Germantown Pike?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Guttenplaner. I'm sorry.
Please, let's get that.
Okay. This is a building you probably all are somewhat familiar with seeing on Germantown Pike. This was part of a land development that the board approved back in October of last year. This involves 15 East Germantown, which is this building, and involves the adjacent parcel, which you see here in part. The parking lot is on the lot that's addressed at 5 East Germantown and a building which is just off the picture to the left, which is currently used by Ashford Consulting and has been completely rehabilitated. The proposal for the land development is to expand the parking lot and to service both buildings. This building is to be rehabilitated and expanded to include more offices for the same companies. And this is what it looks like now. And this is what it would look like from the west when it's rehabilitated. The porch is being put back on. There's an addition going on in the back with a connector, which you'll see in the next picture, which is looking from the east side, looking west. Again, this is the existing building. Here is the connector piece that is connecting the old building to the new addition, all of which is going to be used for offices. Harb has been reviewing the design of this building, I want to say for more than a year. The applicants have been to Harb a number of times. Last June, Harb voted to approve this particular design, but took no official action on a certificate of appropriateness because that requires a building permit. That's what triggers the issue of the certificate. And since they were still in the throes of land development, they weren't ready to submit the building permit. They now are about ready to record their land development and have submitted a land, rather, a building permit. So we had them in front of Harb yesterday morning. The applicant and the architect were here again, went through the designs with Harb. There are no changes from the design that Harb approved last year. They approved the materials, they approved the window configurations, the configuration of the porch, and there was a lot of discussion and approval of both the connector and the addition. So Harb made a motion and passed it yesterday recommending that certificate of appropriateness be granted for this building. So that's what is on your agenda this evening.
Thanks, Charlie. Any board comment?
More question. I see from the rendering, there's no windows on either end of the building. Is that something that Harb addressed?
Harb didn't have an issue with that. The architect had done research and doesn't believe there were windows originally on the building. And the applicant wants to have uninterrupted wall space inside, and that's the only place they can do it because they're restoring all the windows on the front and they're putting the addition on the back. So the sides are the only place they can get decent wall space without openings. Harb, it's been discussed considerably, but Harb approved this design that you're looking at. And there was a concern raised at Harb, and the individual expressed the desire to make sure that the minutes reflected that she had an ongoing concern, which they will. But Harb did not change their action or ask for windows on either side of the building. Okay, thanks.
Any other board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to public comment period. Do we have any public comment? All right, do we have any board comment? Hearing none, I'd like to announce we had an executive session this evening to discuss litigation. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, White Marsh. See you at the trees.